Well, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this afternoon's slash evening's special council meeting, not special, regular council meeting, rather. And if I can invite everyone as they're able to stand for the singing of our national anthem. Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Singh that the minutes of the regular meeting held December 17th, and the special meetings held November 17th, January 7th, 4th, and 21st. As mail to the mayor and councillors be accepted, all in favor, opposed, that is carried. Any disclosures of the community interest? There being none, and there being no communications to refer to file. We'll move on to our presentations. And we have Mr. Jeff Stagger here from the Waterloo Federation of Agriculture to present their consensus of agriculture report. Welcome, Mr. Stagger.
Well, good to see you, Your Worship, and thank you for that introduction. Congratulations to you and fellow councillor Lex for this term of council. Hope it goes really well, celebrate your wins and manage the difficulties and away we go. So tonight, I'm just here to bring a quick 10,000 view of agriculture in Waterloo region and also Kitchener with this document. We'll start off with, there's three documents tonight. Have a look at the first, it's called the Census of Agriculture. Let's just go through the one chart per page to give a quick idea what's going on agriculture. On the first page, you'll see here that there were 33 farms in the Kitchener-Woodland Census Division. How many of you would have guessed that? Agriculture's a big part of your, of your, in the region, there's 1,374 farms, and Kitchener-Woodland is 33 of them. In Canada, there are 49, in Ontario, 49,000 farms. In Canada, there's 193,000 farms. Let's turn the page to the size of the farms in Waterloo region. We're in that segment of between 70 and 129 acres is our average farm size in Waterloo region. In Canada, it's about eight times that. And we do have some very large farms, and some small ones, and they're certainly an important part of our profile here, because typically those are the new types of farms that are out there. These are people who have market gardens, who have community agriculture, and other kind of niche markets in agriculture. On page three, here's the types of farms we have here. We're really good at livestock in Waterloo region, not so good at things like vegetables and melon farming. But that goes back from our climate, our settlers that came here, but, so we continue to have a very strong farm animal sector. Little thing at the top there, four to 10 farms in the region are cattle farms. And on the last page is some of the numbers that's involved here. So, gross farms receipts for the whole region is $563 million. And Kitchener-Woodland, of that, is $9 million worth of farm products, gross farm income from the Kitchener-Woodland area. Moving over to the expenses, you'll see that those guys, it costs them $6 million bucks to do it. So, in the region-wide, then, the gross expense of $183 million. So it's a lot of economic activity. In general, we're lucky in Waterloo region, agriculture stays pretty steady. We're seeing a gradual erosion of our farm numbers, which is not good, but it's certainly better than a lot of jurisdictions where they've had losses of farm numbers in each census, approaching 10% each time. So, but we've been very lucky to hold on to our farm population. The next item is this book that's here called The Real Dirt on Farming. If you want to know something about agriculture real quick, just check this one out here. This is, if you just had a look through it real quick, you'll see some of the headlines that you see in the paper locally and provincially and nationally about, you know, things like Fire Manuels 101. Lots of people have questioned the fire manuels right now. Plants and crops, what's biotechnology? Why do we use pesticides? A great little booklet. Hopefully, you'll, you know, after council and you're looking for some recreation or reading, you'll just take this home and put your bookmark in so you don't forget where you are. I mean, all kindness. Lastly, this is, each year, we have a plan that we try to, our goals, what we're trying to do for the year. This year, it's called Producing Prosperity. It's on the last handout here, this white one. And there's just six items in there, we'll just go through them real quick. The basic thought is, we want a town to prosper, and agriculture's going to be a big part of that. So we're looking for things, the infrastructure to be done. The need for rural internet, high speed, and natural gas is, has always been an important, important issue for us. We'd like to see all day train, good city planning, it means good country planning. If you do a good job in the city, that means there's a good job in the country, too. Hybrid 7, oh, poor thing, it's still kicking around, but hopefully one of these days that may happen. In our area, too, we're pretty lucky in Waterloo region, pretty unique, rural schools, hospitals, and libraries don't tend to be a problem. But rural schools, of course, have targets of how many people should be in a typical school. Getting harder and harder to have, hit those goals. So there's some challenges there. Labor is hard to find in our business, so the actual number of people who are farming who get up to, like, get up in the morning and do chores is probably between 3,500 to 5,000 individuals in the region of Waterloo. This is old data, 10 years ago. But not just those jobs, it's the guy who knows how to fix that computer in your tractor, it's the guy who knows how to analyze big databases of information, it's people that know how to operate some of this new machinery. A lot of high-tech stuff going on. We have at least one job, for every graduate, we have two job openings for that person in some of the parts of our agricultural stuff. You got a young kid, doesn't know what they want to do, take them out for a day to one of our latest tech shows, and I'm sure there's something there that fascinates any young person who likes to play with technology, works like with drones, all those sort of skills. Very important. Last is, we'd like to see the creation of, we'd like to create investment and job growth in the countryside. We have our own little ways to do that. Hopefully, we can look forward to some more of that happening. We need to have affordable communities, and that ties in with, that good rural planning and good urban planning go hand in hand. And lastly, we continue to secure a sustainable food production system. You see some of those topics covered in this booklet here. But always my favorite to remember is, in Waterloo region, we were the first to have what's called the Rural Water Quality Program. And just a short history, the Waterloo region has been the only large municipality still drawing water from groundwater. At the time, people said, "Well, why don't we just make sure the water is clean going in," rather than trying to treat every piece of junk that comes into it. Ta-da! So that became to be the Rural Water Quality Program. It was much simpler to give technical advice and also some financial help for a guy to put a 30-meter buffer strip between his farmland and his cropland, or the waterways. So a whole bunch of stuff like that, and that's the type of thing that we, that we lead in Waterloo region, that's spread throughout the province, and that's the kind of thing that we like to do as your agricultural partners in the region of Waterloo. And so with that, thank you very much. Any questions, I'd be delighted to answer. If not, thank you for your, your time.
Thanks, Mr. Stagger. It's always great to see you here. I do see some questions, but it's always great to have you come and do this presentation every term and remind us, remind us that farmers feed cities and everything that goes along with that. Counselor Davy.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in for your presentation. Happy to hear you touched upon the groundwater, it's something that's very important. Also, happy to hear about the, the technology, you touched upon the technology as well. Question, apologies if it's in your, the report here, but is there numbers kept in terms of the, with technology, greater yields per acre? Is that a measurement that, that is kept, or with respect to any sort of technology with farming or even genetic modification? Do we keep those stats as well?
So, just, I'm not too sure, I heard what you say, but basically, the technology does help us improve our production and also make the food safe, and also to keep the water clean. There are technical issues to most of these things. Have I answered your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. And so to that end, technology is an ongoing resource we use all the time. There's so much research we could do to just improve that whole environmental aspect, continue improving it, to improve food quality, food safety issues. Labeling's the biggest thing now, I mean, it's possible. Every time I ship a cow at the door, it's got a tag on, and that carcass can be identified until it hits the, the cutting floor. So, who knows how far that goes. There's no end to it, as long as you can think of a system, design it, and implement it, and away we go. So we're glad to be part of that. Thank you for that question.
Counselor Chapman.
Yeah, hi, thank you for the presentation. What about methane gas produced by cattle? Is there technology available to capture that gas and use it for other energy purposes?
Chief, I have a hard time hearing tonight. Could you say that again, please?
I'm asking about the methane gas produced by, produced by cattle?
Yes.
And, you know, you talk about technology. Do we have technology here in the region to capture that gas and use it for other energy sources?
Well, you probably wouldn't capture it, that's pretty tough, but here's the good news, that has been done so far. They've already been able to reduce the amount of methane gas, I think 10%, on dairy cattle so far, just by changing rations. You know, simple straight science. What, what still gives a gain on an animal, but doesn't, by reducing the amount of methane gas they, they, they put in the atmosphere.
Thank you.
Okay, those are the questions we have. Thanks so, thanks so much for coming in, Mr. Stagger.
Thank you.
We do have a couple delegations who are here for various items on committee in the whole, but they're really only here to answer questions. So the first is with respect to number two and the fence variance at 27 Glasgow. That is in Counselor Johnston's ward, I believe, is it? Or is it counsel, is it your ward, or the one on Glasgow? Cool, that's your ward. Did you want to move that? Okay. Is there a seconded? Counselor Singh, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, that's carried, that's been approved. And your, your little one there is like the most patriotic standing still during, oh, Canada, I was impressed. And we'll now move on to item number 10, and they are here as well. Counselor Davy, that's in your ward, did you want to move that? Okay, moved by Counselor Davy, seconded. Counselor Schneider, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried as well, that's been approved as well. Thank you. We will now then move on to the reports of the committees, and we have Finance and Corporate Services, Counselor Davy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Singh, these seven items from Finance and Corporate Services Committee be adopted.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, that is carried. We'll move on then to unfinished business, the revised appointments to Kitchener Housing and Centre in the Square. We'll deal with the citizen appointments first, and you have the report with respect to that from the clerk. Does somebody want to move the citizen appointments for Kitchener Housing? Moved by Counselor Ionitis. You're moving both? Okay. Seconded, Counselor Johnson, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, that's carried, we'll then move on to the council appointments, and we'll deal with Kitchener Housing first. We need two people for Kitchener Housing. I'll take nominations, Counselor Singh.
Yeah, I'll move Counselor Davy Chapman.
Counselor Schneider. I'll move Counselor Ionitis. Okay. Are there any other nominations? If not, Counselor Chapman, are you willing to have your name stand? Okay, Counselor Ionitis, are you willing to have your name stand? Okay. I need a seconded, don't I? Because we're in council, Counselor Marsh, seconded that, all those in favor, opposed, that is carried. We'll then move on to Centre in the Square, and I'll take nominations. We need three positions there. Counselor Davy.
I'll move Councillors Singh and Ionitis.
Okay. Counselor Singh.
I'll move Counselor Davy.
Okay. Counselor Marsh.
I thought, I, I'll move Counselor Schneider.
Okay. Counselor Johnston.
I'll move Counselor Michaud.
Okay. And that is, are there any other nominations? Not. Counselor Singh, do you let your name stand? Okay, Counselor Ionitis, do you allow your names to stand? Counselor Davy, do you allow your name to stand? Sure?
No, I just wanted to point out that I'm actually currently not sitting on any committees at all right now. I did step away from economic development, so just putting it out there that this is the one committee that I would like to sit on.
Okay. Counselor Schneider, do you allow your names to stand? And Counselor Michaud, do you allow your name to stand? Okay. So we have five people, and council needs to vote for three. This one, Madam Clerk, can you remind me? It's for four years. This one, Madam Clerk, can you remind me? It's for four years. Counselor Marsh.
are very popular, and people really want to, to sit on them, and I, and I think that, we talked about it, to, to reduce the, the term for some of the committees, but I'm just wondering if we can ask staff to look into that for next term of council if, if need be, because I think perhaps it's, yeah, just something that'd be more fair to have more people who really want to serve on those committees be able to.
Well, maybe one question I do have for you, Madam Clerk, is why that one is for? Like, is that in the statutes, or, like, I know library boards have to be for, and the other board members aren't for, to the best of my knowledge, so trying to understand why that would be.
Through Mr. Mayor and checking with our city solicitor, is, we believe, stipulated in the bylaws for Centre in the Square and for KHI. But if you like, I can take that back and look into it and reply via email to council just to confirm that.
Okay. We can, we can do that, and, I mean, if that's not correct, I guess there isn't, wouldn't be anything necessarily preventing us from revisiting it after two years, like, like the other committees. If that was the case.
Yes, that is correct.
Counselor Ionitis.
Yeah, I wasn't here for, for the last meeting when we did this, because I was away on my honeymoon. I, I think it would be not a bad idea to have, to go through a review of this, because I know personally, I would love to sit on a downtown advisory committee, and I've been shut out on that. So like, I mean, it goes all, all around, so I, I, I think we should have a review.
A review of what?
Of what, of what positions that members of council can sit on. Like, you sit on a lot, on a lot. Do you need to sit on every single one? Or does the members of, of the downtown one need to sit on the BIAs? Like, I think it should be opened up to everybody.
Okay. I think if we're going to look at a, I mean, a broad-scale review, we would have to have, I, I think we would need a motion in that regard, and I don't think that, I mean, if you want to, that's fine, if you wanted to bring something forward.
Put that out there?
Yep. Okay, we'll take it as a comment then. So with that. Mr. Van.
Verbenovic votes for Davy, Ionitis, and Schneider. Marsh votes for Davy, Schneider, and Singh. Michaud votes for Michaud, Davy, Schneider. Gazola votes for Singh, Schneider, and Michaud. Singh votes for Singh, Davy, and Ionitis. Ionitis votes for Ionitis, Singh, and Davy. Davy votes for Singh, Ionitis, and Davy. Chapman votes for Davy, Michaud, and Schneider. Galloway Seelock votes for Schneider, Michaud, and Ionitis. Galloway Seelock votes for Schneider, Michaud, Ionitis. Johnston votes for Davy, Michaud, and Singh.
It's not matching my count. Can we go through this once? Let me take a look. I'm just trying to confirm that with my. Do you want to announce the tie? So the, the two that are on are?
The two that are on are Counselor Davy and Counselor Singh. There's a tie between Councillors Ionitis and Schneider.
Okay. Counselor Schneider.
I appreciate the support, but I'm willing to let Counselor Ionitis continue. I think great things are happening at the Centre in the Square, and the councillors have contributed well to that, so I'm willing to let Counselor Ionitis sit on the Centre in the Square Board.
Okay. Counselor Singh.
Just a question about, I guess, the, the current rules.
Sorry, can you click back in again? Apologies.
Yes, on the current rules, does it prohibit council 2.4 as opposed to 3?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, again, Counselor Singh, we go back to the bylaws and what the bylaws are permitting.
Okay, so we would have to change those bylaws.
And you'll recall Counselor Singh that, in fact, the Centre in the Square Board was looking to decrease, and council did not decrease that number.
Yeah, right.
So, okay, so that is completed. New business, any items of new business? Just one that, well, two items of, of new business that I would touch on in terms of regional council update. The public meetings for the issue of the safe consumption site in both Kitchener and Cambridge are starting this week. The meetings, the first meeting actually is a invite-only meeting for residents in the immediate vicinity of each of the proposed sites. And, and then there's two public meetings for anybody from the community who wants to attend. If members of city council are interested in attending, you should reach out to regional staff and advise them of that ahead of time, so that they're aware of your, your plans on being there. And if ultimately, regional council does decide to go ahead with a location or locations in Kitchener, those would then come back to Kitchener Council under the new rules from the province. We would have to consider and ratify those sites as well. And then the only other thing to just update you on is, yesterday, we had a, a meeting of the, of the Big City Mayor's Caucus in the lead-up to the, the federal budget. There were a number of items on the agenda, including infrastructure, affordable housing, public transit, and the need for a sort of new enhanced relationship between, ideally all three orders of government, but certainly between the federal government and, and municipalities that's more akin to a order of government to order of government as opposed to stakeholder to stakeholder relationship. I will note that one of the, one of the challenges that we talked about, and this is an issue in various provinces, including ours, is that while the bilateral agreement between the feds and the province has been signed, we're awaiting the province to begin the intake process for the infrastructure projects in 2019, and part of our message, both to them and subsequently to the province, will be to make sure we don't lose the 2019 construction season with respect to those projects. Counselor Davy.
Thank you. Just on that, so I, I'm not sure if it's a question for you, Mr. Mayor, or staff, but the federal government did make a lot of commitments to infrastructure building. Is, anecdotally, have, do we, they live up that obligation, or are we expecting to see a lot more in 2019?
Staff can probably answer that, but to be honest with you, I mean, more of the, the base infrastructure money, a lot of it was transit-focused, and so obviously, that is a regional, that would be going to the region as opposed to us. that's more akin to a order of government to order of government as opposed to stakeholder-to-stakeholder relationship. I will note that one of the challenges that we talked about, and this is an issue in various provinces, including ours, is that while the bilateral agreement between the feds and the province has been signed, we're awaiting the province to begin the intake process for the infrastructure projects in 2019, and part of our message, both to them and subsequently to the province, will be to make sure we don't lose the 2019 construction season with respect to those projects. Counselor Davey.
Thank you. Just on that, so I, I'm not sure if it's a question for you, Mr. Mayor, or staff, but the federal government did make a lot of commitments to infrastructure building. Is anecdotally, have, do we, they live up that obligation, or are we expecting to see a lot more in 2019?
Staff can probably answer that, but to be honest with you, I mean, more of the base infrastructure money, a lot of it was transit-focused, and so obviously, that is a regional, that would be going to the region as opposed to us, where I think we're looking to see funding is in green funds, and that obviously would be eligible to us. I don't know if staff want to add anything to that, or?
No, that's satisfactory.
That's fine for now. Okay, great. Okay. Any questions and answers? If not, it's been moved by Counselor Chapman, seconded by Counselor Johnson, that leave be given, the mover and seconded, to introduce the bylaws listed on the agenda, that the same be taken as read a first time, and stand referred to the Committee of the Whole. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. It's been moved by Counselor Singh, that council resolve itself into Committee of the Whole. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Counselor Singh.
Yes, Counselor Davey moves for second reading of the bylaws. All those in favor? Opposed? That carries.
Move the tenders?
Tenders moved by Mayor Benavich. Any questions? Counselor Davey.
Yes, on question, I guess, Roman numeral three, one, the professional services for the detailed design and contract administration for Shoemaker Creek restoration, I have no problem with this project. I just wanted to clarify, staff said, reading the report, that the, any funding that we commit to would not be applicable for the potential flooding grant. So, did staff look at if, whether it's possible or practical to defer this project until such time as we see whether we're getting that funding? And I guess a side question would be, is there a benefit to that in that potentially we might want to spend more money on this project? Because I know there's some aesthetic qualities.
Mr., oh, sorry, Mr. Reedman wants to respond. Counselor Singh.
Yes. Go ahead.
Through the mayor. So, this is the design component only for the project. There is a property that is impacted. It's the redevelopment of the Schneider's site. So, part of the, part of this study is to look at options around that redevelopment site, because a big portion of it is in floodplain. So, deferring some of this work could be problematic from that development perspective. It wasn't our work plan as well to do this study on this project. The DMF funding would be a benefit to allow us to potentially accelerate some of the naturalization work in this area.
Okay, so if we delay, it delays them? It delays the redevelopment of that site as well if we delay any further?
Through the mayor, it could do that because there is floodplain impacts on that site.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for tenders? See none? All the tenders, can I get a mover? Moved by Counselor Schneider. All those in favor? Opposed? That carries. Item number two has been dealt with.
Note to be...
Sorry?
I'll move the second part of the rest, number two.
Oh, I see. Okay. Moved by Mayor Benavich. Any questions? No. All those in favor? Opposed? That carries. And then item number three, can I get a mover? Moved by Counselor Ionitis. Any questions? None. All those in favor? Opposed? That carries. Item number four, Counselor Johnston. Moved by you. It's in your ward. All those in favor? Opposed? That carries. Item number five, can I get a mover? Moved by Counselor Davey. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? That carries. Item number six, can I get a mover? Moved by Counselor Schneider. All those in favor? Opposed? That carries. Item number seven, Counselor Chapman, is that in your ward? Do you want to move? Yeah, moved by Counselor Chapman. All those in favor? Opposed? Two carries. Item number eight, can I get a mover? Moved by Counselor Galloway Seelock. All those, any questions? None. All those in favor? Opposed? That carries. Item number nine, mover? Counselor Johnston. No questions? Just a question by Counselor Gazola. Go ahead.
This is on the T3 recommendation. Can you tell me exactly what it covers?
Ms. Mcoldrick. Through the mayor. This really covers the operating parameters. The three top things are storage capacity with them, our pressures that they provide us, and our daily contract demand that we have to provide into the system.
Okay, so, can you tell me, how much of our, of our winter supply of gas can be kept in storage?
So, we do have, through the mayor, we do have a maximum allowable, which is somewhere around 86 million cubic meters of gas, but as we're, we have a contract demand, so we have to bring in gas at the same time. So, it's hard to say, to answer your question specifically, we have a total capacity that we're allowed to be at, that 86 million cubic meters. And then throughout the day, like, we purchase gas during the summer when it's cheaper, and we put it into storage, and then we take out within the winter, but at the same time, we're bringing in gas as well, because we do have limits on how much gas we can take out of storage per day.
I was just trying to understand, you know, how much of our gas supply we could be purchasing ahead of time that goes into storage. What percentage would it be?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. What we aim for is somewhere around between 80 to 90% full by the November 1st, the heating season.
Okay. So, if it's full, how much of, how much of the requirement, how much of that will you use up in the wintertime? Will that get you through the whole winter?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, because we do have contract demand that we have to bring in as well. So, by the time we're, we're bringing in gas on a daily basis, we have, it's in GJs, how many we have to bring in per day, but as well, so it's hard to say. So, there's not enough for the whole winter, and it obviously depends on the forecast.
Okay. So, where does this, where does this end up on the tax bill? Is this part of supply, or is it part of delivery?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's a gas supply.
Okay. So, but it's not the purchase of the gas, right? It's just the storage, right? You don't, you don't, we don't purchase our gas from Union Gas.
That is correct. We purchase it ourselves, but we, they put it into storage and distribute it to our gate stations.
Okay, that's, so that's, so somehow the gas gets from the west to your storage here.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that's right. We have delivery obligation points, so there's three different obligation points we have to deliver gas to, and we have to meet those for our, under this contract, and daily contract demands through summer minimum requirements and maximums and minimums in winter as well.
My last question, do we have any, do we have any alternative? Is there anything else we can do other than...
Not that I'm aware of.
Other than approve this? Do we have any choice? There's no other, there's no other supplier out there that would fill in that niche?
Right. The big, the big thing that we're gaining from us is the storage, the ability to buy gas cheaper in the summer and store it, and then try to use it all up during the winter.
Thank you.
Any other questions? None. All those in favor? Opposed? That carries. And item number 10 has been already dealt with.
Moved at the Committee Rising Report.
Moved by Mayor Benavich. All those in favor? Opposed? That carries. Madam Clerk, any new items? It reverts back to you.
You got, you don't have your blurb?
Okay, yeah, back to me again. Yes, that's right. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Davey, that the proceedings and recorded community interests and conflicts taken in the meeting of the Committee of the Whole held the state as attached here to, informing part of these minutes, are hereby adopted and confirmed.
All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. It's been moved by Counselor Chapman, seconded by Counselor Johnson, that the bylaws listed on the agenda for third reading be taken as read a third time. Be finally passed and numbered seriously by the clerk. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And it's been moved by Counselor...